Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Result that the regular meeting commence at the hour of 7:14. And be it further resolved that council acknowledges that we are meeting in the Robinsons Superior Treaty area on lands that have been traditionally used by some Indigenous neighbours, nations. But we would like to pay special recognition to our closest Indigenous neighbours, the communities of Bitigah and Nishinabik and Pikmober First Nations, who wish to recognise the long history of the First Nations and the Maiti people in our region specifically, and show respect to them today.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Is there disclosure of interest, pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Seeing none, we move to the approval of the agenda. Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Result that the agenda be approved as amended.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
There are no delegations or presentations, so we'll move the adoption of the minutes of the last meeting. Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Result that the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 27, 2020 are adopted as circulated.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
There are no petitions and no correspondence, so we'll move to reports and committees. Moved by Councilor Arrola, seconded by Councilor Moffat. Result that the minutes of the meetings that the Thunder Bay District Board of Health held April 15, 2020 be accepted as received.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Moved by Councilor Arrola, seconded by Councilor Moffat. Result that the minutes of the meeting of the Thunder Bay District Social Service Administration Board, held April 16, 2020, regular, and May 5, 2020, special, be accepted as received.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Next item is CEO's report.
Okay, thank you through the chair. Just want to announce that the government opened up some more of the phase two this week, starting Friday, or this week. Some other businesses now will actually be able to get a haircut on Friday, so happily. Pools are permitted to be opened. I've been talking with the rectorrector. We have some equipment issues that she's working on getting addressed. And the other thing is, due to staff turnover, is some training on the off, not the lifeguards, but the operators. Our staff, they're working the maintenance of the rec center, some training, and she's working, trying to source out that certification for them right now to get ready for the season. So that work is underway. Restaurants continue to be takeout only, except if they have patio service. So they could have patios outside and serve food on patio type stuff, still not inside the restaurants yet. Sainte Manitouage Health, their CAO was in this week. We posted a new video on the municipal website, those little information videos we're doing, and they're going to start to open up some of their services at the hospital, and some of their restrictions will still be lifted. There'll still be other ones in place, and that, it's in the video, she's done a good job of providing that information for the public. And the other service now that they can get done at Sainte Manitouage is to, if you believe you've been impacted by COVID and you need to get tested or affected by it, that they can go now and now and take the testing. You actually phone the hospital here, instead of the Thunder Bay District Health Unit, book your appointment, and go to the hospital here to have your testing done. So that's in place now. As council knows, we are well in the middle of our budget process. We do have a public meeting scheduled for 9:00 AM on June 19, on the Friday morning, for public comment. The clerk has posted the process on the website and Facebook for the public to provide comment with the COVID restrictions. So that, those things are in place, and we're set to carry on with that. And they can go to our website and see the process on how to provide comment. Renee Warren, our rectorrector programmer, will be moving on. She's secured other employment, and will be leaving her position in a couple of weeks with the municipality. And I had an email tonight from the rectorrector, and hopefully we can meet tomorrow morning about re-advertising that position and moving forward. So we wish Renee well in her future endeavours and wish her well in her new career. We're continuing with work with the Community Revitalisation Advisory Committee. There's another meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 16. Those meetings are videoed and posted up on our social media for the public to view. And do that, most of those meetings have been Zoom meetings and carried on that way, so we're able to record them and put that out there for the public's chance to view the meetings and carrying on. So that process is going along well for the rebranding. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you. We look under new business now. Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Whereas Seniors Month is an annual province-wide celebration, whereas seniors have contributed and continue to contribute immensely to the life and vibrancy of the community, whereas seniors continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this community, whereas their contributions, past and present, warrant appreciation and recognition, and their stories deserve to be told, whereas the health and wellbeing of seniors is in the interest of all and further adds to the health and wellbeing of the community, whereas the acknowledgement and experience seniors pass on to us continues to benefit all. I, Mayor John McEckern, do hereby proclaim the month of June, now and in future years, a Seniors Month in Manitouage, and encourage all citizens to recognise and celebrate the accomplishments of our seniors.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Whereas every June, Canadians are invited to celebrate the contributions of Indigenous people in Canada, and whereas National Indigenous History Month is a time to acknowledge the role Indigenous peoples play in the development of Canada, to honour Indigenous heritage and to celebrate Indigenous cultures, and it is also an opportunity to reflect on the strength of present-day First Nations, Maiti and Inuit communities and their hopes for the future, and whereas Indigenous History Month provides residents of the township of Manitouage an opportunity to learn about Indigenous history, perspectives and culture, and help us to build stronger relationships rooted in the mutual respect and understanding. And whereas June 21, National Indigenous Peoples' Day, and was created, chosen because it corresponds to the summer solstice, the longest day of the year, and for generations, many Indigenous people groups have celebrated their culture and heritage at this time of the year, and is an important symbolism. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a wonderful opportunity to become better acquainted with the culture diversity of First Nations, Inuit and Maiti's people, and to discover the unique accomplishments of Indigenous people, and whereas Manitouage is a community that celebrates its cultural diversity, I, Mayor John McEckern, do hereby proclaim now and in future years the month of June as National Indigenous History Month, and June 21 as National Indigenous Peoples' Day in Manitouage. And I urge all residents to take this opportunity to celebrate and recognise the contributions of the Indigenous people to our communities and country.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Moved by Councilor Arrola, seconded by Councilor Moffat. Result that the presentation provided by Owen Cranny, acting CAO regarding the COVID-19 pandemic emergency in motion be accepted as received. But first you have to, was that part of your, or yours just one?
I just have a report. I provided copies for council. I didn't have the opportunity to have this report ready at the agenda posting day. We needed to have a meeting with the EDC, MEDC board and all that, so we did that on Monday night, and completed everything, and have the presentation or the information back for council, hopefully to make your decision on. Okay? I can go over the report or just take questions as council choose. I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at it. Did Councilor Scapinello receive a copy of this?
Right.
Okay, you didn't email it to my chance.
No, I think I did.
Okay.
Maybe just read it out then.
Yeah, it's not a big report, councillor, if I could. So as you well know, there was a motion submitted by councillor Moffat regarding a system of providing relief to the municipal residents due to the uncertain time caused by COVID-19. Just as one piece of background, there is an anti-donation bylaw. I'm not sure it's really applicable in this case, but just for information's sake, I wanted council to be aware that it did exist. The commentary on the report is, this motion was carried and passed by Resolution 202120. I've attached the resolution for council's review. The motion is that every resident receive $100 to help them in their everyday life during COVID-19. These funds, the funds required would be taken from the Nuclear Waste Wellbeing Fund, and that these funds will be distributed in the form of extreme dollars, so this aids in the local economy as well. So the residents would get the benefit, and we'd also hopefully see an increase of economic activity at the local businesses. A meeting was held with councillor Moffat to look at the procedure to distribute the funds. So Chris, the Towns, the acting treasurer, and I, he sat with councillor Moffat, talked about our process, think we can make it work, and kind of looked at all the troubles and logistics involved. And with that being said, there's no perfect system. We'll do everything we can to make it work as smooth as we can, but there's always exceptions that we rule. Township staff also met with the Manitouage Economic Development Corporation to seek a working agreement to use their extreme dollar program. The board of the MEDC agrees to the use of the extreme dollar program, with the township covering the cost of the printing and administration, along with doing the program management, which we're prepared to do. We talked about that at the onset. They don't have regular staff, and I don't think that would be, to oppose them on that would be a great task, so. The proposal is, is that we'll create a mail drop form. We have most of the content of that, what we want to have on the form, and what we require, put together. This would be mailed out to each resident in the community, with a 30-day window of opportunity to complete the form and return it back to the municipality to get the information. Where we would complete the process, put the extreme dollars in an envelope based on each dwelling, one envelope per dwelling, and have that irritable. The pickup process, which we're working on, for the residents to come and retrieve their envelopes, will be publicised on the form, so that'll be known right up front. There'll be lots of opportunity for that information. Once the program is started, we plan that we think that we could have it completed in six weeks. They have a 30-day window of opportunity to get the form into us, and then we would have, say, another, we would start processing and distributing during that process, and then at the end, the last 30 days, another two weeks of get your stuff completed, and that would be the length of time that we would run the program. I have some received, some comments and emails from the public, and I put them in the report for council's review and consideration. One comment was that, from the public regarding the program, that they thought they didn't like the use of the funds in this manner. One of the suggestions was, is that as opposed to receiving the extreme dollars, that we go out and purchase in bulk and maybe get a good deal, and provide each homeowner with one of those large tipper garbage cans, which is a program we'd like to see the community go towards. It's a different approach and certainly an interesting idea, you know, and would be helpful.
They could, yeah, sorry, through the chair, they could use this.
They could take the extreme dollars and buy the can, exactly the same thing. So that option does assist, and, you know, and maybe we'll see some of that happen now, councillor. It was suggested also that maybe as opposed of, an alternative to this program would be looking at waiving two-quarters of the flat rate of the water bill as a suggestion. From an administration side, that is an easier program for us to administer and less labour intense, and I'm not sure on the exact cost of that right now, but it would be less than the program proposed, and council could consider that. To run and fund the program, not including our municipal staff time, is approximately This money is coming from the NWMO Community Wellbeing Fund, not tax revenue, but I just put a reference in there, so you would, you've looked at the budget, you know what the impact is to have a reference, if you will, on the size of this. So it's about 4.3% equivalent of our annual budget for 2020, as drafted at this time. I've sat down and talked with the acting treasurer about this program, on some of the logistics and putting it together. There is an Excel program that he has put together for us, that we believe is workable to track the residents, the forms going in and out, the payout and all the stuff, so that staff could work with that program. Some of the things we've talked about with treasury, obviously an infusion of $190,000 in pretty short order in the community is quite a bit. It can be a lot for a small local business to collect in and then have to wait to get their repayment. So what we're proposing at the onset is that we would have a set time once a week, where we would have it set aside so that the business could come in and redeem their payment, and we would collect back the extreme dollars. So that, we don't think two and three weeks for the amount of cash that we're injecting to a small business is, it would be difficult for them to facilitate that. So we're prepared to look at taking it in once a week, and so they have an exchange program on a weekly basis, and do that to assist in the program. That's the end of my report. If there's any questions regarding it, I could possibly answer for you.
Okay, through the chair. It just came up, came to you now. The, you're saying it'd be basically a six-week turnaround, but now the extreme dollars never expire.
No, it's not about the extreme dollars. It's about us getting the form back from the homeowner, is 30 days, and it wouldn't take us two weeks after that, I don't think, to have, especially if they start trickling it at the beginning, we'll start working on it through the 30 days, and then whatever wants come in after the 30 days are the ones we've got left to process. Because we hope to get it out as quickly as we can, so the day, once we send out the forms, we will be ready to receive those forms back and start processing and having the envelopes ready to pick up. So, you know, we anticipate a bit of a busy time at the beginning, if you will, councillor. So we've even talked about maybe having a day or two advertised right away, where maybe we have an in and an outdoor, we have it on this facility, and people come in, we have the boxes of stuff ready by the counter, and just have people pass through the office and collect.
Okay.
So we've talked about, there's still some fine tuning to the logistics, but, and the other information I don't have, and the MEDC is working on that for us, we speak, is the printing cost and delivery date, when we can actually get the extreme dollars in. So we met with them on Monday night, and we're awaiting that information.
Okay. I think in that meeting, one of the things that was discussed was the size of the bills, like the dollars, and I think it was probably determined that $20 each would be better, because you don't want to give somebody $100 certificate, and they wouldn't get $10 worth of stuff. The stores and towns just wouldn't be equipped to give that, that kind of change. So doing it to $20 at a time would make more sense.
$20 denominator.
Yes.
The amount of cash flow that the store needs to have, if we put that out there to give it back, is not going to be there. So if they had smaller denominations. It raises the printing cost, because the number you print a little bit, but I think it makes a lot more manageable system for the whole community.
Yes, perfect.
Any questions about it, or is that?
No, I'm good.
Through the chair, if a resident decides to save you some printing costs and ask our acting treasurer, can we just take off our taxes, will that work?
Well, we're going to have to place the order up front. We wouldn't have the forms submitted out until we actually get the thing. I just think that would be a more work and more complication to a process on top of what we're doing right now. If they come in and hand us the extreme bucks, we'll be extremely happy.
Yes, that is a good question. If they came in with their extreme bucks and said, put this on my tax bill.
Yes, we're prepared to take that for a tax bill or a water bill. That was part of councillor's intent, I believe.
Yeah.
Do we need a resolution to approve this, or?
Yeah, you have to, we, so, I'll direct that to the acting clerk, but do we have a resolution to go ahead and approve the program? We have a report back now. We should have a motion, I guess, because the other motion was to get it, to accept it and get the report back, so we should approve the program.
Okay, so you want a resolution drawn up, accepting the program as presented?
To implement the program as proposed.
Okay.
That's good. You were able to hear all that, councillor Scapinello?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
COVID. (laughing).
Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Result that council is in receipt of administration report FBR 2002020, dash, ever three, submitted by Owen Cranny, acting CAO regarding COVID-19 community relief program. And be it further resolved that council accepts the program as presented.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
The next item is request for delegations through the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Now, that's a request to see if we want any delegations with any of the ministers. Did they say that we would be meeting the ministers in person, or is this going to be all?
This is going to be virtual. The whole AMO conference this year is going to be virtual. So as councillor Hudson, the mayor and myself were scheduled to attend that, and with what's going on in the world today, it's been, the whole program is going virtual. We have a couple of weeks yet left to decide if you're going to, well, no, your delegation we should be talking about tonight, but whether you plan to attend, virtually attend the conference, it's three days of conference virtually.
Well, yeah, we were the ones that were going to attend, so.
That's right, so it's, there's those spots available, we have up to July 6, I think, to apply, to register to go to the virtual conference.
Yeah, well, I think the people that were already going to go should go.
Yeah, so if you'd like to, we haven't registered for that yet, we could do that. I could check with councillor Hudson and see if she's interested in that format, and we could do that.
And tonight we have to decide if there's any ministers that we want to have delegations with. Are there any areas that we think we'd like to get some help on?
Through the chair, I just think the, it seems to be the ongoing problem is our local highway, the 614.
Transportation.
Transportation, you know, the speed bumps that have come up on those roads.
And maybe we can also, on the transportation, maybe we can talk to them about cleaning off both sides of the highways, so they can see a little.
Trim it back, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So a delegation with Minister Maudlin?
Minister of Transport, yes, yeah, it's fine. And do we have anything with, usually the Minister of Health is one that we seem to be able to get in.
That may be, and I'm not sure when or if, and what minister we would talk to, Municipal Affairs maybe. There has been COVID programs all over the place. I know the Municipal, Federation of Municipalities of Canada has written letters to the government, as well as AMO themselves have written letters to the government. I'm not sure of any other agencies, Chris, that, looking to municipalities, we've yet to record what all our impact is yet, and compensation, or is there a plan for any of that for municipalities? And I can ask the acting clerk to maybe do a research, what would be the appropriate ministry to approach, probably Municipal Affairs.
Yes, it is Municipal.
Yeah, Municipal Affairs, so maybe a delegation there would be appropriate, just, I'm sure there'll be lots of communities with the same concern, but.
Could get three of those three, that would be good, so. Moved by Councilor Moffat, seconded by Councilor Arrola. Result that council requests delegations with the following ministers at the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO Annual Conference. Minister of Transportation, Minister of Health, Minister of Municipal Affairs. All, oh, you're forgetting that.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Moved by Councilor Arrola, seconded by Councilor Moffat. Result that council requests delegations with the following ministers at the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO Annual Conference. Minister of Transportation, Minister of Health, Minister of Municipal Affairs. All, oh, you're forgetting that.
Councilor Arrola?
Yes.
Councilor Moffat?
Yes.
Councilor Scapinello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Moved by Councilor Arrola, seconded by Councilor Moffat. Whereas section 239-4 of the Municipal Act 2001, SO 2001, C25, provides that before holding a meeting or part of a meeting, that it should be closed to the public, the municipality or local board or committee of either of them shall state. or local board or committee of either of them shall state by resolution the fact of holding of the closed meeting and the general nature of the matter to be considered at the closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that this meeting is hereby closed to the public as the subject matter being discussed falls under the following section. One, Section 239-2F, advice that is subject to solicitor applying privilege, including communications necessary for the purpose, COVID-19 recovery program. Number two, Section 239-2H, information specifically supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board of, by Canada, a province or territory, or a crown agency of any of them, the Ministry of Transportation.
Councillor O'Leary?
Yes.
Councillor Moffat?
Yes.
Councillor Scapanello?
Yes.
Mayor McEckern?
Yes.
Okay, closed session.